I call this April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty five Special Committee of the Hall to order at six oh one P M. This meeting will be held in a hybrid manner where members of council staff and the public can participate electronically. This meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and will be available on the township website. Notices hereby provided that under the authority of the Municipal Act two thousand and one and in accordance with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, that all information attained is considered part of the public record. All rules apply to the meeting as if everyone was attending in person. And if there is a problem with the technology impacting the proceedings of the meeting, the meeting may be recessed at the call of the chair. So today, the committee will hear a presentation from Watson and Associates and consider the final options for the ward boundary and council composition review. The committee is being asked to make a recommendation to council. If the committee chooses to recommend one of the proposed options this evening, staff would prepare prepare a bylaw for the May thirteenth meeting of council. Members of the public who wish to be notified of the decision may provide your email address to the Clerks Division by adding your email to the open forum registry or emailing the Clerks Division at clerk@loyalist.ca. You can also follow the project on the Township Engagement Platform, engage.loyalist.ca/wardboundaryreview and subscribe to receive notifications. So with that, we have an agenda before us. Can I get a recommendation to move the agenda? Counselor Proderick, seconded by Mr. Mayor, all those in favor. Motion is carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof this evening? Seeing none, we come to our presentation by Watson and Associates. So I will turn it over to our consultant.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see council. Thank you to the chair. Thanks for the committee for having me and hearing me tonight. I'm just gonna maybe ask the clerk, do you want me to share the presentation on my end, I assume?
Yes, you can share. You should be able to share your screen.
Perfect. Yeah, I assume everybody can see that.
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Okay, so like was mentioned, really the intention of tonight's meeting is to start to close the process on the ward boundary review. What we want to do tonight as consultants is present the committee with recommend final recommendations to consider. We will provide a quick update regarding what we heard, a couple of points about survey responses and engagement. And then we'll jump right into an analysis or a summary of the final options presented. And we'll try to leave lots of time for council to ask any questions or provide any comments. So if we look at the first slide on the screen right now, just a couple of tidbits to give the committee a little bit of perspective in terms of what we heard through public engagement. So the vast majority of respondents in this case, and pretty obvious, either live or live and work in Loyalist. Not up here, but one that I want to mention that's pretty typical to engagement with most ward boundary reviews. The vast majority of respondents have usually lived in the municipality for ten years or longer. So that's typically who engages in these reviews. A couple of other things when we look at number four question from the survey, so the top right of the screen. We asked which ward do you live in to get an idea of how, what kind of participation do we get amongst the different wards? Pretty obvious when we look at the chart that Ward three had a high level of engagement. And when we consider the participation rate or the survey respondents relative to the population of Ward three, the island ward, really, really high engagement, but good engagement in the other wards as well, especially Ward one. We asked a couple of times throughout this process to help us gauge the guiding principles. And the guiding principles, as a quick refresher, were representation by population, incorporating that population with growth, looking at geographic and natural features to have identifiable ward lines and communities of interest. And when we look at the results in terms of that, again, communities of interest, a high emphasis on communities of interest. So asking the consultant team and council ultimately to consider that as as just as highly as representation by population. And then in terms of the options that we're going to get into tonight, in the preliminary round, we presented seven options to the public to consider, various configurations of those options. Examples one and two, and just again, we'll get into this in a second, but as a refresher, examples one and two both had a separate island ward. And those were overwhelmingly the favorite choices of the seven options. But again, keeping in mind, as we do, some of the relationships of the survey, not super surprising considering upwards of forty, forty-five percent of the respondents were residents of the island. In addition, example seven, again, for a refresher, was the example where the number of local councillors would be reduced from five to four, so before local wards, was the third highest after options one and two. And then a smattering between the remaining options. So definitely a strong favor for an option that considered an island ward and definitely some secondary favor for an option that looked at four wards. A couple of things I'll mention just before I go on. One thing we'll notice both in the preliminary options as well as the final options being presented tonight is the move away from an asymmetrical council or award system. And again, for a reminder, that means that right now you have three wards, two with one member, three or one with three members. That's what's called asymmetrical because there's different numbers of councillors in each of those wards. We heard quite strongly through council interviews, through talking to staff, through our quite robust engagement, that there seemed to be not over, not majority, what I'm saying, not a hundred percent, but definitely a majority or overwhelming number of people who wanted to see single member wards as part of this review. So no preliminary options considered asymmetrical designs. And the last part I'll just mention before I move into the options on public engagement, only because I think this is important to address because it came up in in some comments and some questions in terms of feedback we received. And one of the questions was if examples one and two were the overwhelming favorites, why are those not the final two options? And what I want the public and council to be aware of is public engagement is an extremely important component of this review, but it's not the component of this review. It is public engagement, it is talking to council, it is talking to staff, it is using case law, the guiding principles that I mentioned that are really important, as well as the consultant's team expert expertise. We have done several of these ward boundary reviews all around Ontario. So it's really the breadth or the whole picture that we're trying to encompass when we come up with with the final options that we're going to discuss in just a moment. Okay, so getting into the final options. So what we're providing tonight to council, and this is all in the final report as well, are two final options. And they are fairly consistent with what we heard in the survey and what we heard in person engagement as well. One of the options is the original example two. So we, if we recall, just a moment ago, we mentioned examples one and two were retention of an island ward, highly favored in public engagement. This is based on example two with some slight adjustments. Doesn't really change what we presented, but what we're proposing in the final option is a little bit of cleanup in some of the rural areas north of north of the railroads and west of County Road six. So some of this area here was fixed up based on, again, some conversations with staff and trying to take into account some of the things we heard in public engagement. Overall, when we look at this design, it's heavily favored on communities of interest like we discussed. It has the retention of an island ward. It tries to have Amherst View contained within two wards, Bath as an anchor for another ward, and then another more rural ward anchored around Odessa. So some similarities to what the system looks like now. Obviously, like I said, it's moving to a single member ward, so going from three to five. But it does retain some of the things we know about the existing system. But what it really tries to do on the mainland is tries to equalize the population between the four mainland wards, recognizing that retaining an island ward, we are not going to achieve the population parity principle that we're trying to. But outside of that, when we look at the mainland wards, especially for two thousand and twenty five population, we have very good parity, no ward, the the range is about forty-seven hundred to about five thousand. So, you know, about three hundred people, so really, really good in terms of parity. Again, when we look going forward, that parity starts to skew a bit because there's a large development that's occurring in Amherst View as part of the secondary plan there. But again, if council wants to, at least at this point, retain the communities, the identifiable identifiable communities that exist now, this option does that. It tries to achieve, if we look at the next slide, most of the guiding principles, again, we have to take that assumption that that the island is unique and it allows us to move away from a perfect parity and the population principle. But other than that, it really does address most of the guiding principles. Again, with that caveat that as there's future growth, there may have to be some adjustments to the Amherst View area to account for that. But largely successful and viable, I think, option to consider for council. Then when we look at the second option that we're recommending, so option one, like I said, has some familiarity, right? Council size stays the same, retention of the island ward and really more so a rejigging of the mainland wards and moving from an asymmetrical to a symmetrical design. In final option two, we blow things up a little bit and and it moves a little bit away from the familiarity that I just spoke about. Number one, as I mentioned earlier, it contemplates four local councillors instead of five local councillors. So a reduction in size and a change to the composition. And probably the the main part that we're looking at right now is what I just spoke about in terms of retaining an island ward in option one. And option two, it moves away from that and really starts to move towards a balanced guiding principle system that, again, we lose. Again, the caveat is we lose that identity of of a separate island ward. But from a guiding principle perspective, if we look at the next page, it really hits on all of them. It manages to balance population, both existing and in the future. It tries to account for communities of interest as best as possible, recognizing that the obvious elephant in the room about the island that I just spoke about. It pretty much uses very simple and clear lines for the most part. So again, it's it's a little bit, not a little bit, it's quite different from what we know today. But like option one, also a very viable, sustainable and more long term option for council to consider. So a couple of things before we turn it over back to council, and I think this was briefly touched upon at the beginning. So there's a couple of things that I want to touch on. So council has authority under the Municipal Act to make the changes that we're contemplating tonight. The Act allows council to determine the composition of council, so that's the size of council that we spoke about. It allows council to be elected by general vote, so that's at large, by wards. Or you can have a combination, a hybrid system of votes and at large. We're recommending to retain an at ward but symmetrical system. And it gives council the authority to divide or re-divide the municipality into wards. Or you can dissolve the wards completely and, like I said, move to an at large system. So council has that authority to make all of those decisions. As we've talked about previously, while the Municipal Act authorizes council to do those things, it's pretty silent on how council should do those things. So there's not a lot of guidance in the Municipal Act on size of council, criteria based on population, what ward should look like, even all the guiding principles that I spoke about are not from the Municipal Act, but taken from case law experiences, Supreme Court decisions. So again, that's what the Municipal Act allows council to do. But council has some leeway to determine what's right for them based on the uniqueness of their own municipality. So what can council do tonight? So council can choose one of the recommended options that I just provided. So simply say I like option one or I like option two, no changes. Council can ask for some changes or tweaks to what I provided. If they are minor in nature and don't have a huge impact based on the consultant evaluation on what we provided as a recommendation, we think that those can likely be done without further public engagement or further reports. However, if they're significant, then it would probably have to be brought back or deferred and brought back to staff and we can determine next steps. Council can pick one of the other preliminary options that we proposed. Council can do nothing, status quo, council can dissolve the wards. So those are all available tonight to council. As was talked about, should council choose to implement new ward boundaries tonight, it would then have to pass a bylaw, notice of that bylaw would have to be provided. And then that bylaw has an appeal period of forty-five days. Anyone can appeal that bylaw to the Ontario Land Tribunal. So I will, I think that's it for me. I will stop there and turn it back over to the chair. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you, sir. So I'll turn to the committee. So we'll we'll kind of structure tonight into parts. While we have the consultant with us, any questions from council related to the process thus far, the results, the options, things like that? And then in terms of our general discussion, we'll have that after the fact. So if there's any questions for the consultant, I'll turn to the committee. Mr. Ennis.
Thank you, and thank you to Watson for your for your firm's work on this important review. I had a couple of questions about option two, if maybe you could bring the map back up on the screen for everybody to see.
What was that? Sorry, I seem to.
So can we just have option two? Can we have option two up on the screen?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you. It's just around the the boundaries along the Clark Road, Mill Haven Road, Caden Road area and how those were determined, just looking for to get a bit more information from you. I'm quite familiar with that area. I grew up in Clark Road, live now and on the other side in the Mill Haven, Caden Road area, lots of friends and family. So I had a few questions about this, including from my own mother, so I wouldn't be a good son if I didn't didn't ask. So maybe we'll start with the Clark Road side. And I'm speaking about the Clark Road area, south to Taylor Kidd, rural area, fairly small rural area in the grand scheme of things. Why attach that to an Amherst View ward rather than the Odessa rural ward?
Yeah, thank you and through you, Chair. So thanks for the question, and we actually had some opportunity to examine that. So if we think about the preliminary options, if we went back, we actually looked at that in several ways. When we attach that piece sometimes to the north, we attach that piece sometimes to the west and we attach that piece as you see it here, sometimes to Amherst View. We heard a few things during engagement and even some of the comments in the survey. Some exactly what you said, where the connection was more rural and more toward directed more towards Odessa. We heard from some others and and just maybe as a caveat there, we're talking about some pretty limited population under two hundred in this area. But we heard from others perhaps that it can be connected to Amherst View. From a consultant perspective, the other thing we looked at was the size of the potential ward four, and we heard from some that potentially bringing that down to Taylor Kidd just extends that ward from a geographic perspective even more. But all that said, it's a pretty, in terms of the consultant's view, it's a pretty interchangeable area for us. If council believe that the connection was better going north to Ward four, that's kind of what I said at the end of my presentation, I would consider that a really minor tweak. I would consider that something that the public has already seen, that the public, some of the public has already supported. And it wouldn't change the population parity barely at all. So again, if council felt that that was better connected, I would have no reservation at all to to make that tweak and change.
Thank you very much. And similar question on the other side with the area sort of Mill Haven, Caden Road, down to the train tracks, I suppose, or Taylor Kidd, but let's say the train tracks. Again, similar type question, it's it's a it's a rural area. Why, why attach that area to sort of, let's say, to Bath, Amherst Island instead of Odessa rural? I think, you know, many people in that area would probably think of themselves first as as rural. And secondly, identifying with a town called the Odessa, just did geography rather than than Bath, Amherst Island.
Yeah, and thanks. And again, through the chair, to make it really quick, exact same answer. So for us, but even less population, I think here I have it written somewhere, we're talking like a handful of residences in in that area. So exact same answer, if again, if council felt that that was better connected going into Ward four, consultant team would have no issue with making that change.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Ennis's question with respect to the train tracks. There are some properties that go along the train tracks. So if a ward boundary was created, it may go through some properties. So I I think that's one of the other reasons why the the ward boundaries don't do not parallel the train tracks.
Go ahead, Counselor Ennis.
Thank you. And so just to follow up then, you know, i- if council were to make the amendments we're talking about, does either staff or the consultant have a recommendation regarding how is is then a Taylor Kidd better? Is Taylor Kidd a better dividing line than than the tracks?
So staff's recommendation would that would be that the boundaries run along roads and not so potentially Taylor Kidd would be a better option, yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell, do you want to just?
Sorry, thank you. Just with that recommendation, there would need to be consideration for the industrial areas and keeping those intact. So the Taylor Kidd Industrial Park, for example, you wouldn't want to bisect it with Taylor Kidd. So that would need to just be reviewed as well.
Other members of the committee, questions for the consultant? Counselor Parks.
Thank you through the chair to the consultant. Just I'm gonna ask just for a definition of what communities of interest are to start with.
Thank you for the question again through the chair. So communities of interest, the way we identify that guiding principle is we try as much as possible, really to focus on two things. If we could avoid drawing lines through places, but rather around them, that's one of the things that we try to do. And we try to look at if there's variety of communities of interest or a variety of villages, are we keeping similar interests or similar villages, places of interest in the same ward? So that's really, I think, the, you know, simplest definition of what we mean when we're trying to look at communities of interest. And maybe just a quick add on to that is when we think about the guiding principles, they're a bit of a push pull, right? When we think about communities of interest and representation by population especially, in a lot of cases, it's difficult to achieve both. Because when you try to work for perfect parity and this, the options we did in this municipality are a good example, then sometimes community of interest, as we just spoke about, with some of the changes, aren't perfect and vice versa. Sometimes we draw, you know, the lines that respect communities of interest like an option one, but we have to give up some of that representation by population principle. So I hope that answered your question.
Just as a follow up, so my question then, based on that definition, would be, for example, number six from the original report with the balanced growth, it does state in there that the communities of interest were partially successful. But I guess my question to you would be based on what you see as Ward two on that original report. In my opinion, and my thoughts, is that Amherst Island and the Ward one would be very, very similar in their interests. And I just wondered if you could clarify that for me as to why that wasn't a recommendation.
So just for everyone's reference, option six that is being referred to had Amherst Island attached with a large rural swath of the mainland. And the reason we put that as partially successful was simply from what we heard from almost everybody, not everybody, but almost, that the island should be a unique place and should be a unique ward. And as a result of that, that analysis was a partially successful for communities of interest because the island was attached to the mainland. I believe in most instances where the island is attached with the mainland, it's only a partially successful evaluation.
When you're talking about communities of interest and you're talking about that definition, I just, I'm not following how that does not apply with Amherst Island and the mainland in that particular war. Because in my opinion, when you're looking at the hamlets that are in those areas, they follow very, very similar interests with the islands. So that's more just a statement. Let's just leave it at that.
Counselor Proderick.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank thank you to Watson and Associates for the report. Just a couple of clarifications. Can you maybe just give me a brief on what's the difference between largely successful and and yes? Because you use the terminology and then all of a sudden you changed to yes. I'm just wondering if you can maybe give me a little background on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we we sometimes, that's a big part of debate on the consultant team because some of these are on the verge of one or the other. So it's a little bit of of art mixed with science. But the definition of a yes is it's, you know, it pretty much meets that guiding principle. And again, we're not talking necessarily perfection, but for example, representation by population. To be a yes, we would want to see all the wards within the acceptable range of variation. But in addition to that, sometimes they can all be within the acceptable range. But let's say two are twenty percent high and two are twenty percent low. It still might be a largely successful because there's still quite a bit of variance in that range. So yes, the largely successful, it's it's, they're pretty close, right? Yes, is is about as close as we get to perfecting that guiding principle. Largely successful means it's quite adequate and very good at meeting that guiding principle. But, you know, it's a bit nebulous, I think, between, you know, actually defining that exact line. I hope that that gives you a little bit of clarity.
And just, just this may be out of this conversation, but in terms of no matter what option is taken, the bylaw will strictly talk about the geographical boundaries because I noticed we haven't had much discussion, at least in my memory, about the the role of the deputy mayor because that's one that, you know, the mayor is obviously defined under legislation in five councils. But I'm, can you just comment on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So it wasn't something that was part of our scope necessarily, or and I'll also add to that, just because it's not part of our scope, doesn't mean that it's not something that we examine or analyze. But to do so, we would have to hear strongly, I think, from whether it's council, whether it's the public, whether it's staff, that that aspect of composition was something that wanted to be examined. We didn't really hear much about that as part of this review, that there was any desire to look at the deputy mayor's office, to look at how the deputy mayor was elected because it could be elected at large or selected from an existing councillor. Or, as you said, there's no reference to deputy mayor in the Municipal Act. I mean, it could be a position that council decides to eliminate. That is all at your perusal. The Municipal Act gives you authority to look at the composition of council. But again, from a consultant perspective, we heard little to nothing about that during our process. nor anything about, you know, the selection or how the deputy mayor is currently elected. So we didn't feel a need to examine it or pursue it. But again, it's always something that's open to council.
Counselor Willis.
Through the chair. In option two, it's for councillors and presumably a deputy mayor and a mayor, so that is six. Where would the tie-breaking happen on that kind of a situation?
So I can comment quickly, but I think that's more a question for the clerk to answer. But I can, I can just comment from a high-level perspective, because we make, we work with a lot of councils, and there are quite a few even-numbered, surprisingly for me, when I first started doing ward boundary reviews, but there's quite a few even-numbered councils. When we talk to even-numbered councils and talk to clerks from even-numbered councils, I don't want to ever say there's not tie-votes, but it seems to be a rarity. When we factor in, you know, sometimes a councillor isn't there, sometimes a councillor has conflict of interest. Even a lot of odd-numbered councils end up having votes with an even number of voters. So I'll just give that perspective, but I'll probably pass it over to the clerk so she can answer how those tie-breaks are actually broken.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Willis's question. So usually, the tie-breaker is the chair or the presiding officer. If council chooses an option where there's six council members, there will be situations where the presiding officer will be required to vote on a matter. And there will be situations where there'll be a tie and the motion will fail.
Some of the other councillors have asked for some definitions, and so I'm wondering if you can speak to the criteria that you look at for effective representation.
Yeah, thank you, and again, through the chair. So effective representation, the way we define that and look at it, we call it the overarching guiding principle. So it's not a guiding principle so much in and of itself, but what it is, is really the culmination or the analysis of all of the other guiding principles. So what we say is effective representation is achieved, again, using the lens of the guiding principles, if you've largely met all of the guiding principles, right? There are exceptions to that, right? In this case, if we believe that there is a uniqueness to a place, if we believe that a community of interest is so strong that it potentially outweighs some of the typical criteria that we look at in the guiding principles, and we feel as a consultant team that ultimately we can defend that decision to the Ontario Land Tribunal, then we consider that to be effective representation. So it's really about a structure and a governance structure that effectively meets all of the guiding principles that are part of the criteria.
Other members of the committee, Counselor Proderick.
Good evening. Through you. In option one, Ward Three shows a decline in 10 years, and Ward Five shows a decline in 10 years of population. Just kind of curious where you came up with the math on that, why you had population declining in those two areas?
Yeah, great question, and again, through the chair. So we get asked this a lot in terms of, you know, why some wards are stable and declining in population, even with, when some of those wards, we know have future residential development in them. In this case, those wards are pretty stable in terms of future populat-, or in terms of future or significant future residential development. But why we see population decline, and just for council's knowledge, as my other experience, I study school-age demographics, so I have a lot of knowledge about this population decline. So what's happening now is the population ages as we have smaller families, less children, even in areas, like I said, that might get a little bit of growth. As that happens, we start to see population decline. So that's exactly what's happening in some of these areas, especially in more rural areas, as people, again, start to move, as older people start to move closer to settlement areas for care. Like I said, less families having smaller children. We start to see these declines in the population, even more so over the last 10 or 20 years, even in really, really new subdivisions and new developments. What we've noticed is pretty significant population decline. They seem to peak really fast. As a new subdivision comes in, people move in, families grow. But because families tend to stay in place a lot longer, so there's not as much, as many families. You know, historically, families would move into a place, you'd move into a starter home, you'd move into your next-size home, and then as your kids moved out, you'd move into a condo or a smaller house, and your kid, and that neighborhood would then regenerate, and another family would move in. That's not happening as much anymore. So people are staying in place a lot longer. So we don't see that same regeneration of neighborhoods happening. We actually see a pretty quick population decline. So I realize as I'm talking, that's a super-long answer, because I study this quite a bit, but I hope that helps give some clarity as to why we see that.
Thank you, certainly, just because on option two, it's basically the same thing for wards three and wards four. So it was a same follow-up question, but you didn't answer very well, thank you. Just because we came together 27 years ago, this is the first time we've looked at a ward boundary review, and obviously, I'd like to be built in for growth, so this is done right the first time, and we don't have to do it again. Thank you.
Counselor Ennis.
Thank you, through the chair. So, you know, there's been discussion, and including in option one, of a dedicated voice for the island to its distinction. In my view, at least, rural is also distinct from the urban areas. Has there been any consideration for, in your analysis, for a dedicated protection of that community of interest, and distinct community of interest, in my opinion?
Yeah, again, thanks for the question through you, Mr. Chair. I think actually, most of the options, when we consider the ward that has Odessa in it, which I think we consider to be, you know, kind of the rural ward option in this, at least from what we heard. And like I said, that's not the be-all and end-all, council may have a different opinion on that. But from what we heard, we would consider that to identify as the rural ward, mainly because a lot of what we heard is that rural ward has an anchor, right? There's still somewhere where you go for school, or church, or hospital, or a community center, or sports. And that seems, for the large part, in terms of what we tried to do in that rural ward, to be Odessa. So I think I understand, like, do we draw a ward that, you know, completely around all settlement areas that only had rural? And we didn't, but largely because of what we heard in terms of feedback, that there seemed to be a preference for some sort of settlement anchor, even in what we would consider a largely rural ward. So I hope that helps answer a little bit of that.
Final questions for the consultant. Then I'd ask for a mover that the presentation from Jack Amendolia of Watson and Associates be received. I have a mover to that effect, Counselor Ennis, seconded by Counselor Proderick. Any further discussion? Call the question, all those in favor, motion is carried. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everybody.
So we're now going to move to open forum, so the 15 minutes has been set aside for open forum. Any individual may address the committee regarding the council composition and ward boundary review. Again, as usual, each person has three minutes to speak. Anyone wishing to speak can register in advance with the Clerk's division or raise their hand if they're online. Do we have any pre-registered today, Madam Clerk? We do not. We have one? Go ahead. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Michelle Lele, I'm at 5050 Front Road, Ward One. Mr. Deputy Mayor and Counselor, I'm not here to discuss my preferred option. I think it could be obvious from the word I am from. I'm here to congratulate and thank council for this, this exercise. I think it was an exercise of great transparency. When it was announced, we weren't sure, but the level of consultation through the whole process and the opportunity for citizens' engagement, I have to commend your staff and yourself for this opportunity. The clarity of the guiding principle and the understanding of the weight and of each of them is a factor that helps the residents through your decision-making process of this thing. So, that being said, I just want to, after being here, I wasn't intending to add this, I just wanted to thank council for this exercise. But having heard the presentation, I just want to, and I know council will make a decision on that, and I've heard questions about community of interest, and I've heard the consultant talk about unique, Amherst Island being unique. All of you who've been on the island, I don't need to talk further about the uniqueness of the island. All of you who've been there, experienced it and witnessed this, and the people there with whom you engage would have been great people to experience the uniqueness. But what I want to raise about uniqueness on Amherst Island is something very not cultural, or that would be qualified as unique, but it's the uniqueness of the service, municipal service on the island. And if we consider another part of the township, rural part of the township, I think the service, some services are different. I think the level of service is significantly, significantly different. So I hope council, in your decision, will consider that a councillor representing a ward who has different services and different level of services might be a bit complicated or perceived by a resident as not totally balanced. So I just wanted to point out that I haven't seen that aspect in the presentation of the consultant, and I hope that council take that into account in your deliberation. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. I'll turn back to the audience, both in chambers and online. There is anybody else that would like to address the committee? Yes, sir. Everyone up here knows who you are, Terry, but if you wouldn't mind stating your name and your address for the record?
Good evening. First, I'd like to commend council on their diligence. It's been a crusade of mine since I was on council to get a permanent voice for the rural. From what I see, it looks like that will come to fruition. And I commend you highly on that. My only concern is of the two options that are final, error one and two, is what Lorna Willis brought up, and that's reducing the council to six. Even with a council of five councillors, even if one states a conflict of interest, it still can be a tie vote. However, with six, and that transpires, you go back to a tie-breaker. So, here again, I have concerns with only six councillors. However, I'll leave it in your hands. You have done a great job since the election, and we taxpayers, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn back to the audience, both in chambers and online. Madam Clerk, is there anyone online at all wishing to speak?
Through the chair, there is no one with their hand raised looking to speak.
Very well. Anyone in chambers? Going once. Go for it. Just state your name and your address for the record.
I overthink things sometimes, I, Wilhume, 11 Park Crescent, lived here for 31 years, as old as I am. On this specific subject, I'll just say that I agree with the first person who spoke, and just that I understand that it's not consistent necessarily with the rest of the population at all, but I do think the uniqueness of the Amherst Island should be considered, although, you know, I understand my connection to that island is just through Amherst Island radio station, which has also moved and gotten a satellite station closer to the ward which it's expected to be a part of. So I just wanted to add, yes, do consider the uniqueness of Amherst Island itself. And I guess that's all, and I again, wanted to thank you all in the council for your due process. And just that, I, my first thought, when I saw on Facebook the ward boundary proposal, my first thought was, oh, no, Amherst Island is, you know, it's, that's going to be difficult being with the two, you know, separated by a body of water and then being a part of the same ward, but going by the presentation, it makes sense, although I still somewhat agree towards its uniqueness. So I just wanted to say thank you and good job on your presentation and all. I couldn't turn down an opportunity not to talk. So, thank you, and that's all.
Thank you. One more time, anyone in chambers wishing to speak? Going once? Going twice? And we shall move on. There are no delegations, so the items for consideration, the council composition and ward boundary review, the final report. So, this is, you know, this is the, you know, decision-making time for council, so I'm not going to look for a motion right away. This is the, this is an opportunity for councillors to essentially lay their cards on the table. We'll have a robust discussion about what we, what we, what we feel, about what's been presented, about the process, about the two options. And then, you know, once everybody's had their say, then I will look for a motion at that time. So this is an opportunity for everybody to be on the record. then I will look for a motion at that time. So this is an opportunity for everybody to be on the record for 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 what they think. So I'll open it up to the committee about who wants to go first. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, and through the chair, just some initial comments. We have a very consequential decision before us, and it's about human rights. Canadian Charter, Rights and Freedoms, Section 3, every citizen of Canada has the right to vote in an election. The purpose of Section 3 is to protect the right of each citizen to play a meaningful role in the electoral process. Supreme Court jurisprudence also indicates that Section 3 protects the right to effective representation. This right includes the idea of having a voice in the deliberations of government, as well as the right to bring one's grievances and concerns to the attention of one's government representative. Relative equality of voting power is of prime importance under Section 3 and a first condition of effective representation. Denial of rights under Section 3 affects one's dignity and sense of self-worth. So while this is a ward boundary review, and much of the focus is on maps and where to draw lines on a map, let us remember that this is more fundamentally about each individual's right to vote, regardless of where the individual lives in Loyalist. And let us ensure that each individual living in Loyalist is treated with dignity and that each individual's right to effective representation is satisfied to the greatest extent possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Ennis. Councillor Proderick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got all kinds of little sort of sidebars here, but I've lived in Loyalist for 47 years now. I may have voted for somebody in chambers right now. The days of Ernest Towne, Bath and Amherst Island. In a governmental context, that was forced upon all three townships at the time of the Mike Harris era, 1998. And I know that the consultants talked to some of the members of council from that time, and it's not a it's not something that they took lightly, and I I think, given that it's been 28 years since then, it's time to look at some adjustments. I'll leave it at that terminology. I do think that the options recognize the respective community. Nothing's ever going to be perfect, and I think the consultant referred to that. You know, you could have four out of five things, but what is the thing that anchors the community? The fact that he mentioned several times anchor communities, whether it be Wilton, Odessa, Bath, Millhaven, Stella, that's important to our township. Let me just see here. I do think, in in my my experience as a councillor, the, I can never get that word right. The fact we've got three councillors in the one ward, that's not a workable option in my mind. A person should be able to pick up the phone or email and know that one of these people is responsible for this geographical area. I like the idea of a single-member ward. I do support that. The one thing that, in the report at some point, you know, the concept of Amherstview where I live, and I'm older than anybody here on on council, so I can go back to my youth, was that Amherstview had old Amherstview and new Amherstview. And I still talk that way, and I'm sure many here refer to that. Old Amherstview has different needs than new Amherstview, just as Odessa has different needs than Wilton, et cetera. When I ran for council the first time and was defeated, I remember being at the debate in at the Agricultural Society. And I remember vividly the sort of undercurrent at the time was, well, you can't have a mayor and a deputy and somebody else from Amherst Island because that will will give them more weight, I guess might have been the terminology. And it was fairly obvious at the time. That's not the type of township I I support. I got elected as a representative of Ward 3, but I also have a a duty to the whole community. And in that sense, I would support option one. I'll be right up front. That's the option I would choose, and I know it's a, it's an entire council decision. But, you know, part of, I guess, being in this position is, you also have to look out for those who maybe don't have the I don't want this to come out the wrong way, but the fact that Amherst Island is unique, we should all celebrate that, not just the people that live on the island. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Proderick. Next, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to start by thanking staff who led this process and our consultants as well, Watsonson Association, which did the legwork, of course, and coming back to us with a very good report and a lot of information through the whole process. So it's been almost a year of compiling information, interviews, presentations, surveys, calculations, brainstorming, and finally presenting the two options here this evening. I appreciate the consultant and staff taking the time to receive so much information, respond to questions, and consider all the information received. This has been a very educational process for me as well. So I'm going to just share some of my thoughts, and I'll start with my overarching perspective when I got on council and and still what my thought process is. This is an exercise to ensure that every area of the township has the opportunity to vote and easily understand the ward they are in. Equality in representation is a great goal, but not the only one. The reason I say that is I was always of the belief that when I was elected in Ward 3, that was my voting base. That is where I place signs. That is where I typically talk to residents during the election period. However, once elected, my work area was Loyalist Township. No ward has a majority of votes, so everyone needs to be engaged and active throughout the township to make good decisions. Even Ward 3, with three votes, still could not pass a motion. I believe every council member works for the entire township, so representation is not for a number of voters. It is for all voters, despite the size of the area you are elected to. And I do believe that our council does a good job at that, of working for the township. So council is designed to be aware of principles, policy, limitations of authority, data, and then determine the best fit for everyone within Loyalist. There is more to our township than data. This is evident in the guiding principles. This knowledge of the township the council has is what sets us apart from everyone else that has worked on this project. We take the information and options and make a decision of how best this will work for Loyalist Township. So much of what we do is prescribed by other levels of government, but this item is ours to make our own. In making a decision for Loyalist, I'm going to put it out there, I believe option one is a preferred option. I believe option one takes into account all the growth projections and population calculations, all the surveys completed by residents throughout the study, determining identifiable boundaries and communities of interest, and my historical knowledge into consideration as well as I make this decision. Just a couple of things from the presentation and from the charts. When I'm looking at it, the reduction of council, 50% did not, 50% of the respondents wanted council size to stay the same. 32 believed it was too small, and approximately five thought it was too large. So I think our composition looks like it's right on. Option one is a mix of example one and two in the original options. Combined option examples one and two had approximately 53 or 54%. It's hard to read on the graph. And example seven, which is option two, received about 18. So with the ranking of representation by population and communities of interest being equal, this tells me that the residents prefer option one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, and through the chair. Option one has been mentioned twice. I'll talk a little bit about my my concerns with option one. First is the extreme population disparity between Ward 1 and the rest of the wards. The some limited variation is acceptable. The 25% variation established Supreme Court cases, OLT cases, is fairly widely accepted. And the variation here is in the 450% to 550% range. It's a, it's an incredibly large population disparity. The the idea Amherst Island is a special place. I don't think anybody's arguing with that, but the idea in terms of electoral, creating an electoral system, that it is so isolated and culturally distinct that therefore requires overrepresentation, I have difficulty with. The example used was, the comparison used was to the federal writing of Labrador, Newfoundland, Labrador. Labrador and other writings, well, first of all, that's a federal example, and so when you give overrepresentation to one federal writing, that's one out of 343 seats. Right now, we're talking about one out of five. That's 20% of seats. So it's it's a huge difference, and it's a federal example. Is it appropriate to have overrepresentation in some writings such as Labrador or similar communities? Absolutely. Those communities where overrepresentation is appropriate tend to be vast, isolated, northern, remote, culturally distinct. So for example, the Labrador example, these are, it's comprised of many fly-in communities, that type of isolation, and many indigenous groups. So that type of cultural distinction, that type of remoteness, yes. My wife grew up in Northwest Territories. I lived in Northwest Territories for a couple of years after university. Sometimes we may get too focused on our southern bubble, but if you want to see remote, isolation, distinct communities, these are fly-in communities. There's, you, there's no ear-around roads. The, there's a road when the, when the lake freezes, and there's a nice road. Otherwise, it's fly-in only and commercial fly-in only. There's no ferry that operates regularly, and it's heavily subsidized. It's a commercial fly-in only. So that Amherst Island, while a special place, reaches that level to require overrepresentation, I'm not comfortable with whatsoever. And the, and I guess the final point is option one did not receive a yes or fully satisfied for effective representation, which is the overarching principle of what we're trying to do here with the electoral system. Option two was the only option that received a yes or fully satisfied by independent expert consultants for both representation by population and effective representation, which are the top two principles in any representative democracy. The independent expert consultants have been very clear here, and I agree with them. Thank you.
You, Councillor Ennis? There are comments. Councillor Willis.
Actually made notes for once. I will be supporting option one as the best choice for Loyalist Township, and and I want to speak about a number of things, if I may. Regarding representation by population, while it would be very nice, it's only one of the principles, and we need to look at all of the principles as a whole. In choosing example two, we're committing a disservice not to one but to two communities, Bath and Amherst Island. And I want to speak about both of them. It's a forced marriage of two very different communities with unique issues and concerns. Both Bath and Amherst Island were distinct communities at amalgamation. They had their own, their own townships. While we've sought to acknowledge and respect communities in interest, how can we ignore the unique qualities of both Bath and Amherst Island while addressing the needs of other distinct communities? I've always said Amherst Island isn't special. It's different. Option two seeks to merge two communities with very different levels of service, from a community that relies on wells and septic to one that has municipal sewers and water, from a community that garbage and recycling and brush pickup is done at their doors to having to be home on the right day to go to the dump. And Bath is a community that's concerned with responsible development, which is not a concern necessarily for the people on Amherst Island. And foremost, the ferry, how can anyone representing the community not live and die by the same ferry that the, that the people in that community live and die by? Bath and the island do share some commonalities. We share our community pride. We share our civic engagement. We share our strong volunteer service spirit. That's what makes each of us unique and a distinct community of interest. There's not more obvious geographic boundary in our township than a three-kilometer-wide channel. I can't underscore the need to recognize, to recognize this. As an island resident, I rely on the mainland for my work, my supplies, my entertainment, and more. As such, I travel regularly in Bath, Amherstview, Odessa, and Wilton. How often do mainland residents come to Amherst Island? Without living in a community, how can you understand how to represent it? The final principle is effective representation. This is important because effective does not always mean equal. Effective means living in the community, attending community events, being accessible to residents, understanding what it means to live in that community. I don't think someone from the island could effectively represent the people of Bath, nor vice versa. In option two, the merged community of Bath and Amherst Island, Amherst Island has a population of 900, Bath has a population of 4,919 people. Those affiliations to community will not go away, so basically what we're saying is no one from Amherst Island will ever sit on this council again, just by the sheer numbers that they would have to achieve to get support in Bath. At the end of the day, to choose an option that's guaranteed to be challenged at the OLT does not move us forward. The report clearly says that status quo is not a fair system. Option two stands to upset two community, communities, and is likely to be challenged. Option one has a greater chance of being broadly supported and implemented for the next term of council. Bath and Amherst Island are distinct, vibrant, and resilient communities that deserve their own voice at council.
Councillor Willis, Councillor Ennis.
Thank you, and through the chair, just regarding different levels of service. I acknowledge that there's a different level of service on the island. There's also a clear different level of service between mainland rural and urban. But we're asking mainland rural to to split up and join other communities. To to set that aside and have an anchor community and become one with in that ward. So I don't follow the logic of that we can, if we're putting community of interest paramount, then it should be paramount for all community of interest. I I don't understand why we would have community of interest be paramount for the island, but not, but it's okay to to slice and dice mainland rural and give some mainland rural to this, this ward, some to that ward, and some to this ward, which in my view goes against the community of interest principle. I don't understand how we could do it for one community but not, but not for for others.
Councillor Perks.
Thank you. This is a difficult decision. I I certainly understand Councillor Ennis's points of view. I also, you know, understand I also, you know, understand and support the comments made by Counselor Willis, too. I personally think neither one of these options is viable. I think they're flawed in nature. That's my thoughts. Just taking it back to a very basic matrix system and pointing, assigning points to the scores that have been provided by the consultant. Option two would be the option. I don't like the option because, again, I think there's a difference between what the island offers and what the mainland of the village Bath. And I hate to say that because one of our, in part of our strategic planning, we wanted to try to meld the township into one entity. And I still think that we're not doing that by, by these options on this, on this ward boundary review. So I'm still on the fence on this. I think option six, and I keep going back to that, is a better option because I think it aligns the needs of those particular wards more in line with those residents in those, in those areas, in those geographic areas. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor Parks. Counselor Buderick?
Through you, sir. So one week ago today, we had a speech for the mayor about strong mayors. And any council of seven could be accepted to have that strong mayor situation. And he did the right thing and said what he had to say, said he would never accept it. And then the deputy mayor stepped up and said he agreed, and it was a great thing. One thing we could do is if we did go to a council of six, we would be under that threshold of seven, and we would no longer have to ever worry about anyone coming in in a rogue situation in a future election to come in and say, hey, I'm the mayor now. I came out of nowhere, and I'm doing what I want. It's a way we can safeguard to the future. Also, I do agree with Counselor Parks that six was my preferred option in the last option. So it's obviously not one of the two here, so we're not talking about it tonight. But, and I also wrote down, we are a municipality that's still, still very much siloed. Our strategic plan, like, like Counselor Park said, is to try and bring everyone together. And as much as everyone is unique in where they live, we're a growing municipality. It should be a bit of a, more of a melting pot compared to the way we're trying to structure it. That is all.
Yes, we did. Counselor Ennis?
Thank you, through the chair. Just, just to follow up on Counselor Buderick's point of sort of the community coming together and being more of a melting pot. I think in terms of option one versus option two, that's what option two asks of the community. It asks each of the sub, sub-communities to perhaps sacrifice a bit of their, their uniqueness and become part of a ward on roughly equal terms in, in the pursuit of the overarching goal of effective representation.
Other comments? Seeing none? Crunch time? Oh, my, my Counselor Buderick.
Just one thing I did in trying to get a better understanding for the number one reason for representation in voting. Number one reason for representation in voting is to ensure that the interests of voices of all segments of the population are fairly reflected in government decisions. In a representative system, citizens elect officials to act on their behalf. And if certain groups are underrepresented, their needs and concerns may get ignored or inadequately addressed, leading to policies that disproportionately benefit others. Representation in voting helps safeguard equity, legitimacy, and accountability in the political system.
Counselor Ennis?
Thank you, and through the chair. Just regarding, I was hoping to hear the committee's thoughts on those questions I asked of the consultants regarding the, those potential minor amendments to the rural area. So I was just wondering if, if anybody had any comments on, on those?
Thank you, Counselor Ennis. Okay, we can take a straw, a straw poll on that. So we're not putting any options on the table just yet. But in terms of indulging Counselor Ennis's suggestions about changing essentially Clark Road in option two, we can just kind of go around the table. We'll start with you, Counselor Willis.
And this would be, I guess, a question for staff, and I don't have a boundary map or anything. But I'm wondering why, instead of using the actual road, if we could use the back of the concession below it? So in the old maps, there's concessions. They were 200-acre farms or whatever. Because I think it's, I find Coronation Boulevard confusing. There's a Kingston side and a Loyalist Township side. So if it were at the back of the concession, you don't have neighbors across the street from each other dealing with a different counselor. Does that make sense?
I can put that, I can put that to staff. Or can staff answer that? The CAO is going to take a stab.
Just if I may, thank you, Chair. As a former clerk and someone who went through a ward boundary review before, it certainly is possible to do the concession line between properties. The issue comes is it's sometimes difficult to assign those properly and know where they are. And with property severances, it, it, it sort of becomes difficult. You know, staff would certainly have to look at it. It's possible to draw the line that way. Difficult to describe in the bylaw and often difficult for residents to know which ward they're in. But we can look in that Caton Road area and see if it, it is relatively simple to do that line. But it certainly is possible, but it is a little more difficult administratively with impact and trying to sort out which properties in which area because of, as I said, severances and joining those farm properties using roads is, is much more easy and clear for residents and for staff.
You got Counselor Willis? Okay, Counselor Proderick?
I appreciate Counselor Ennis's idea, and I would support that.
Very good. Counselor Parks? Mr. Mayor?
Before I do, I'd just like clarification of where the line or how far the line. The area between the boundary and County Road Six would go to Taylor, is it Taylor Kid?
Do you want to speak to it, Counselor Ennis? Just again, so, so everybody out there is, yeah.
So for the Ward Three area, which is in purple, and Clark Road South, I think Taylor Kid's the only annexed boundary to the south other than the train tracks. If you zoom in, there's a little bit of green there. So it'd have to be the train tracks in Taylor Kid. In terms of the teal, the area I was speaking about is east of County Road Four and south of Mill Haven Road, down to either the train tracks or Taylor Kid, depending on which one's better. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I'm just, you know, you've heard the consultants say, refer to the, what is it, Ward Four as the Odessa Rural Ward. Well, if it's the Odessa Rural Ward, then, then, and there are no major concerns with it, then let's make it the Odessa Rural Ward by making some minor amendments. But I'm not trying to push it. It's just if, if people think it's a, it's reasonable.
Yep, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, now that I, I wanted to make sure I was looking at the right boundaries. Between six and four, I think going down to Taylor Kid Boulevard is too far. We are splitting our industrial parks. I think if we're going to change it, the railway line is the only viable option, I think. There's not a lot between Clark Road and Taylor Kid as far as residential. The numbers, as the consultant said, are fairly low. I think he said maybe a couple hundred, if I remember correctly. I don't think it would have a huge impact one way or the other. Going to dividing lines like concession lines or lot lines, it just rings back to the original presentation that we received where they were saying the current boundary around Bath is very confusing because that's the way, they followed the old town, which followed lot lines. And it was so jagged and confusing that some people weren't quite sure what side they were on. So I, that's my concern with going that route. Otherwise, it probably wouldn't be a huge issue. I guess the only other concern I have, and the the brown ward, or it's an off-brown, I guess it is, the Odessa ward. I'm not a colors person. It's already large. If somebody, okay, so where I live, if I get a call, when I was a councillor of Ward Three, when I got a call, there were times that I drove for half an hour to get to the resident. So, you know, parity has a lot of different things. And for me, the ability to actually do it and go to all the locations in a timely fashion is parity as well. So if somebody over Switzerville Way calls, and it's a half hour over and a half hour back, already I've got an hour and I haven't, I haven't met anybody yet. So I'm just keeping in mind that we're looking at parity as, 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 you know, residents. But I believe there is a parity for area as well. And getting that area too large is going to be disproportionate as well for the ease of being able to actually address everyone's issue and be well aware of what's happening in, in the whole thing.
Duly noted. Counselor Buderick? Got no issues?
No, I know, I'm, I since you're asking. There are some farms on Clark Road. There's no farms in Amherstview. I, I think it would be fine being pushed to the, the rural ward. I mean, when I went out there and campaigned, I've been out there many times. I've got a couple of friends live out that way. And yeah, there's farms out there. And I don't see how that would, you know, adjust with people who live in Amherstview, that's all, in that ward.
Counselor Ennis, further comments from you? I think there's consensus that there's a willingness to entertain that idea. Counselor Proderick?
Just, just sort of one quick one. Again, the area a councillor refers to there, given that the Cataract Conservation Authority, and it's a protected area, we're not going to see any growth in there. So about 200 population right now, even with secondary suites, we're not going to see a lot of growth there.
Final comments on that, Counselor Ennis?
Yeah, I think the, the intent was to, where you can, under the principle of drawing lines around communities instead of through them, let's do that where we can. I think it's a minor amendment. I think we've, the consultants have said it's, it's minor. Council seems to feel it's fairly minor. I think the, you know, staff raised, I think the train tracks from the Mill Haven Road is, is reasonable. Staff raised that it might bisect a few properties, and then they'll have two properties. But there, there are probably actually a lot of examples of that in, in the township where people own multiple properties. So they'll vote where, where they vote. But it was really under that principle of draw the lines around where we can and attach those, a reasonable amount of rural area to that, what we're sort of deeming the Odessa Rural.
Thanks, Counselor Willis. Mr. Mayor?
I'm just making a note. I just, I noticed that the consultant, I turned his camera back on. I just wanted to make sure that he had an opportunity if he had any further thoughts on this or if he was just here in case we questioned, had questions.
Madam Clerk, is he wanting to speak? Go, go ahead, sir.
No, just here for questions and clarification, but everything is good. I'm happily listening to the debate.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the committee. If the committee would like to make those slight amendments to adjust Ward, the proposed Ward Three and the proposed Ward Four, I would just advise the committee to refer the matter back to staff to consult with our planning team to consider the, the industrial properties and then, and then bring back a report to the May 13th meeting. That's when the bylaw is anticipated to be brought forward anyway, so we could bring back a report with those considerations made and, and provide you a better recommendation than making these adjustments on the fly.
Very good. Counselor Proderick?
So just for information, then, are we going to pick an option and then make the recommendation to staff?
So if, if option two is recommended, staff are requesting that it be referred back to staff so that they can deal with that, those particular adjustments with planning staff and then come back with that to the May 13th. Question, Mr. Mayor? Yep?
I just want to clarify. With Counselor Ennis, were you looking, were you hoping that those boundaries would be amended, no matter which option, or only for option two? Because it could apply to both.
I think it makes sense in either option.
Okay, thank you. I just, that was a clarification I was looking for.
So then I would suggest that, I'm looking to the clerk now, I would suggest that in that case, whichever option is selected tonight will come back on the May 13th. Like, the big decision is still getting made, but it would come back in a, in, in changed configuration in either option that's chosen tonight on the May 13th meeting. Right, okay, very well. Any other further questions? Yep, Counselor Parks?
You through the chair. Just a kind of a closing thought on this. As I've expressed, I'm, I'm not really happy with either one of these options. You know, from listening to discussions this evening, I see pros and cons for both options. And I do acknowledge my colleagues' comments and concerns and the notes that they've raised on it. I'm leaning towards option two, and my rationing is that I just think it's a better option than option one. You know, we all acknowledge that Amherst Island does have some uniqueness to it and they're, and they're, they do have a community of interest in, in their demographics. I also feel that Bath shares the same thing. So based on that, the fact that representation is being combined into one, I think that uniqueness could be managed by one representative.
Counselor Parks? Hey, council? Counselor, Counselor Ennis?
Motion time? Thank you, and through the chair. I move that one, that the report from the Clerks Division dated April 29th, 2025, re-ward boundary review final report be received. Two, that the committee recommend option number two. Three, that option number two be referred back to staff for amendment as discussed at the committee. And four, that staff be directed to bring forward a bylaw re-dividing the existing three wards to match the amended option recommended to the May 13th, 2025 meeting.
So moved. Seconder? Counselor Buderick? Over. Comment?
Thank you, and through the chair. We've had a robust discussion. I think everyone has their ideas and thoughts on the table. For me, it comes down to that the independent expert consultants rated option two as yes and fully satisfied for representation by population and yes and fully satisfied for effective representation, the top two principles in any representative democracy. I agree with them.
Seconder?
Yeah, just one, one comment, really. Leadership is doing the right thing even when it's hard.
Other comments on the motion that's on the floor? Counselor Proderick?
I, I don't know if it's appropriate this time, but could I ask for a recorded vote on this?
I'm, 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 I'm doing a recorded vote regardless. I made that decision. Other comments on the motion? Seeing none, I will call the question, in which case the clerk will call out everyone's name.
So I'll start with Counselor Proderick? Counselor Willis?
Against.
Counselor Buderick? Counselor Ennis?
Four.
Counselor Parks?
Four.
Deputy Mayor?
Against.
And Mr. Mayor?
Against.
So, committee, that motion fails four to three.
I'll turn back to the committee. Mr. Mayor?